Call this meeting's order. Please call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Here.
Mormon. Elsa Beck.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Instrom.
Here.
Number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
There are no changes.
Both to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Number three, presentations of petitions and other communications. A, public hearing for the proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment facility roofs replacement project. Are there any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. B, set a public hearing for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. It's, oh, do we need a, uh, motion to?
To.
Tools. Okay, we do need a motion to adopt, uh, resolution thirty-two oh seven approving, uh, the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate for costs of the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment facility roots replacement project.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
B, set a public hearing for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the lime slicker replacement project.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
C, set a public hearing for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M for the consideration of an application for community development block grant upper story housing program for ten oh three Marshall Street, Boone, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
D, set a public hearing for June seventh, twenty twenty-four at six P M for the consideration of adopting a community development and housing needs assessment.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Item four, public comment for items not on the agenda, and we have a number of people on Zoom. Give them a moment to chime in if they need to. Items not on the agenda. Seeing none, either virtually or in person. We will move on to item five. Reports of standing committee committees. A, Policy Administration, Employee Relations Committee, uh, Williamson, I will note here that we'll not have pub- public comment on this report at this time. I'll have any public comment at the end.
Okay. Um, update. The, uh, committee met, uh, this evening about five fifteen, and we discussed the, um, chicken ordinance, the proposal for the chicken ordinance. And we had, um, three different options that we kind of looked at, and one was to approve, um, we have an ordinance proposed twenty-three oh four. One was to approve that, um, as written. Second option we had was to, uh, look at that ordinance and make changes to it. And the third was to recommend that we do not go ahead and do not approve, um, this. Um, and so we, that was our discussion that we had, um, and Bill, do you want to kind of summarize?
Sure, so, uh, councilperson Williamson explained the options, um, that they discussed. In the end, there was a motion, uh, to not recommend approval of the chicken ordinance. That vote was, uh, there was a second that vote was two to one.
Anything else?
That, um, I think the discussion that we had, uh, kind of was based on some of the issues with that, on the enforcement, the, uh, just the different things, and um, part of what we discussed was the input that we'd received from quite a few citizens, and I think that's important that, uh, we share that most, I mean, we are here to represent the citizens of Boone, and so really looking at the input that we received. And on this item, um, we did receive a lot of i- input from the citizens of Boone, and, and my decision, and I assume others can answer or speak to it if they want, but my decision was solely based on the input that I received from citizens. And the majority, um, that I received was no, we do not want urban chickens, so I think that is, that input was very, um, important in all of us making our decisions so that we would represent the citizens of Boone.
Committee members. Nothing bad.
Nothing bad right now.
That was not the response I got, but.
Okay. Uh, so that was the reports, and we'll have further discussion on that matter, uh, when the ordinance is up on the agenda. Thanks. B, Public Safety and Transportation Committee.
No report, Your Honor.
You. The Utility Committee, Instrom.
Uh, we just have thirty-two oh eight resolution, um, authorizing the execution of a professional service agreement with, or for the twenty twenty-four sanitary sewer I N I inspection program phase six with W H K S and confidence. Uh, I'm gonna hand this over to Bill just for ease.
Sure, so the resolution is in the packet, uh, the utility committee went over the agreement, the recommendation was to uh, approve this at full council. As he said, this will be phase six, uh, of this, uh, I N I project that we started several years. So we're making progress. So we're six years into it, basically, so, uh, ask for a motion to approve resolution thirty-two zero eight.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom. Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Anything further on utility?
No, Your Honor.
B, Economic Development Committee, Mormon.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have several items on here, item one and two, this is the property right across from McDonald's and next to the Regency Facility. Um, and I'm gonna turn it over to Bill to give you the details on that.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we're, uh, discussing, uh, the E D committee on this project, this is the, the, uh, preliminary plan is up on the screen for you all to view, I also placed one on your desk. So this is a project is, that is forty-six, uh, housing units, three eight, uh, unit apartment buildings and the rest and in townhomes. In addition, there'll be two retail spaces on the front end of it that will face Marshall Street. The approximate total cost of this project is just over fifteen million dollars. Uh, Chuck, uh, Winkle Black is in the audience here with H C S, uh, in case you have any questions for him or he has anything. Um, what we talked about is some sort of assistance with the, um, utilities and the infrastructure on this project, that, as you know, it's an empty field right now. All utilities are out there, but obviously they have to be expanded into their own, into the property, plus a road needs to be built. That, uh, the cost of those is just over two million dollars to get those put in. We discussed, the city did, uh, with, uh, Chuck and H C S, uh, for this project that we would participate in up to fifty percent of those utilities through PIF tax rebates. There's no money out of the pocket for the city, it's just tax rebates over it just a ten-year period. Um, Chuck, did you have anything that, uh, you wanted to add?
Uh, just Chuck Winkle Black and Skir Companies, uh, remains, we're excited about the project we started working on last fall, and, uh, just like I said at the economic development mission meeting, it's just been such a pleasure, you know, to build on the staff. Everybody here has been great to work with, and we're excited to get going, we're still probably, by the time we get work through the plating and all the site plan approval and stuff, probably be September, we're hoping uh, October at the latest, but our initial plan is to start with, uh, two eight-unit buildings and seven townhouses to the north. Uh, we generally do our projects, once we get started with construction, we'll just build out to completion. But just not saturate the market all at one time, we'll build, uh, get some stabilized and then continue to build out till it's complete, and we're excited, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. So I'll answer any questions you have, uh, along with this, so you have two different votes, is, uh, is the resolution for the tax credit, uh, that they're going to apply for as part of this project? Uh, you'll notice on the resolution, can you put the resolution here? Uh, it mentions in the resolution that the tax credit application is for four, twenty-three units. If I just want to, uh, confirm with you that it's actually forty-six, it's twenty-three for the grant program for the tax credit, so the amount of incentives that we're gonna participate in, and for the infrastructure is actually for the full forty-six and plus the retail. So I just want to make sure you understood that. Um, E D committee, uh, voted to recommend approval of the incentives. As you know, when you approve the incentives, it's not the last vote, we will put together development agreement uh, with Chuck, and that agreement ultimately will be brought back to you for approval. So you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. Otherwise, I would ask, uh, for approval of the incentive and to allow staff to move forward with this project.
Yeah, we'll sub move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Sir, do you want me to just keep going?
Yeah, well, the, the next two are the capstone project.
I, I, we've got to do thirty-one, thirty-two twelve.
Oh, okay, thirty-two twelve, yep.
So the next is a resolution thirty-two twelve, resolution approving the application of Prairie Place L L C, which is the name of this project to the Iowa Economic Development Authority Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program, and I would add, the E D committee, uh, voted uh, to recommend to council to approve this, uh, application, and I would ask for a motion to approve resolution thirty-two twelve.
Removed.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Items three and four are the capstone project, one at Lincoln and one at. For the detail.
Okay, first one is resolution thirty-two oh nine approving that the application of Lincoln Flats L L C to the Iowa Economic Development Authority the Housing Tax Credit Program. This is over at Lincoln School, if you remember a few months back. Councilman Mormon, Councilman Bird, and some staff went over to Cedar Rapids to look at capstones projects. These are market rate rental projects. So they will, uh, go in and reconfigure Lincoln School and make them into co- apartment slash condos for rent at market rate. So the resolution, uh, asks, there has to be a match from the, from the city, so the Lincoln res- resolution. Get to it here, give me just a second. Is for, in Lincoln, there'll be twenty-four rental housing units, so the match for the city is twenty-four thousand dollars a thousand per. Now, I would tell you that the company that is doing this are nonprofit, so they will not pay property taxes. However, there will be a development agreement with them, and they will pay one thousand dollars per year per apartment to the city for services and things like that. So the twenty-four thousand, that is our match, will be paid back to us with after a year, once they get up and running, and then every year after that, and there will be a development agreement that will be brought back to the council to sign. So as far as the money where it comes from, we certainly could you, uh, take the twenty-four and I'll get to page here shortly uh, out of the general fund, because shou- a year or a little more after that, we'll be getting it back, we'll put it right back in the reserves for the general fund. Since, as we did fiscal year twenty-five when this would come up, we weren't, this project was not getting completed, you know, we weren't this far, so we couldn't budget for it. So I'll answer any questions you have. If there are none, I'd ask for approval for resolution thirty-two zero nine.
I make that motion?
Second. Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Um, item number four, resolution thirty-two ten, resolution approving the application of Page Flats L L C. It's the same application for the same program. This, uh, paid school, this project will contain twenty-eight rental units at market rate. The match for the city is twenty-eight thousand dollars. Again, that twenty-eight thousand dollars will be paid back after a year or so, uh, we'll have a separate development agreement with this that states that they will pay a thousand dollars per apartment per year to the city, so in that, after that first year when they get going, we'll, we'll, uh, receive our money back, and again, there'll be a development agreement as well that they will sign and brought back to you for approval. Uh, if there are no questions on that, uh, a motion for approval for the resolution would be great. Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Number five is the last one on the agenda, um, it's Elite Gutters, and they are gonna purchase two homes downtown, or two, uh, houses downtown, demo those and put two new houses on that, those two lots, and I'll turn that over to Bill, and he can give you the rest of the detail.
Sure, so these houses are on the five hundred block of Green Street, I've been by them and reviewed them. I certainly think, in my opinion, that these houses that they're going to be demoing and putting up, single-family homes qualifies for demolition, they certainly qualify for our program. Um, so the match on this is just our jumpstart boon, so for each house, uh, they will receive what everyone gets if they build a house if they apply for it, is, uh, tax abatement on the first seventy-five thousand dollars of the value of the new home for five years. So this is resolution number thirty-two eleven, and, uh, I'll answer any questions you have, otherwise ask for approval for resolution thirty-two eleven. Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
I have you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, number six, Department Reports, Building Official Day. Uh, the Clerk Finance Officer, Andrea.
Oh yeah, I have two items, both of them, um, pertain to the ten oh three Marshall Street. Uh, the first one is, um, authorizing me to solicit, uh, a administration and grant services for C D B G grant on the upper story, uh, apartments. Um, so I need an authorization to allow me to solicit for that.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
The second item is also for ten oh three Marshall Street, uh, this one approves the scoring criteria, and then also I would like to ask on that you appoint Bill Skier, uh, Jim Robinson and myself to the review committee. Um, these, uh, applications are due on June fourteenth, and we need to have them back on the council for June seventeenth for approval, so with such a short, uh, turnaround, um, that's why I'm requesting the three of us to be the review committee of that.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yeah.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Bye.
Well, okay, uh, C, City Attorney, Jim.
No report, Your Honor.
Uh, D, Director of Public Works, Wealyn.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Like to report the citywide cleanup twenty twenty-four is underway, and if anybody would like to learn more about the project and program, feel free to look me up, and I can take you along for a couple hours in the project, otherwise hopefully, you know, see you by next Friday.
I've done that before, it's pretty cool.
Yeah. Thank you.
E, Library, Jamie.
For, we have a big event going on right now, there's about fifty parkers, and, um, we have about eight hundred good, um, participation, and we need for our summer reading carnival.
How many?
Eight hundred.
Wow.
It was packed. That's awesome, there was a ton of people.
Super.
Really good, it was really good.
Thank you, um, F, uh, Park Director Superintendent, Mike.
Um, I just want to let everybody know, um, uh, cemetery cleanup started today, so anything that's left in, not in bases or basically in our way, we're gonna pick them up. They'll be stored for approximately a week, then we'll get rid of them. Somehow, uh, we'll put them in a trailer down by our shop, so we gotta say you don't go in the shop, just prefer the trailer. Uh, the pool is up and running for regular business hours, twelve, one for adult swim and one to eight or nine depending on the day for public, so.
Uh, where's Milwaukee Park at right now?
Milwaukee Park, uh, we're trying to clean up around the perimeter and, uh, let it dry out a little bit more, and we'll be opening up soon, I hope. So hopefully within the week.
All right, thank you. Engineer, uh, Bill.
Thank you, sir. First item is resolution number thirty-two thirteen, if you remember at the last council meeting, the contract for the downtown Millan Overlay project was awarded to Manat, uh, the, the, in the packet of this resolution and the contract uh, that's been signed that we need to sign and get back to them. Uh, total with bid alternates, everything, one fourteen, three ninety-three. Uh, bid all just for a total of seven hundred seventy-seven thousand nine sixty-four ninety-five, I would ask for a motion to approve resolution thirty-two thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly. Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Second item is a prove a change order number two for the Eighth Street Millen Overlay. Um, the good thing about this change over, it's in the positive, the reason for it is the final quanti- quantities for the project adjustments were not as much. Uh, so there was a credit to us in this change order of five thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and three cents. Uh, I'll answer any questions you have, otherwise I'd ask for a motion to approve the change order, number two. Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
My third item is resolution thirty-two fourteen, resolution accepting engineers' notice of acceptability of work and final pay request for the Eighth Street Millen Overlay project. And I take a motion to approve resolution thirty-two fourteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Anything further?
No, sir.
Hey, H, Public Safety, Chief out of here tonight, uh, Chief Weble.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, I, City Administrator, uh, returning to Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, so my first, uh, item is discussion, if you wish, and then approval to move forward Recreation Center referendum on November fifth. I have the correct wording for it, as that will be worked on as we move forward on this, but what this accomplishes tonight is you're, you're authorizing staff to move forward with the referendum vote for the Rec Center on November fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Move to approve.
Second. Need a special? Please call the roll.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Next item is resolution number thirty-two fifteen, it's a resolution approving and authorizing the use of a contract with I S G Incorporated for pre-referendum services the Boone County Recreation, but, uh, complex. Resolution, uh, number thirty-two fifteen is in the packet. Uh, the total of, for this contract is fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. And I'll answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, I would ask for a motion to approve, uh, resolution thirty-two fifteen.
Move to approve, three, two, one, five.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon.
Yes.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Third item is resolution thirty-two sixteen, resolution approving and authorizing an agreement with the Boone Area Veterans Center Incorporated concerning property located in seven six. Uh, the last council meeting, staff received, uh, approval from council to move forward with assisting them with this demo. In the packet is the, uh, written agreement that the city attorney came up with, it has been signed by them, so now it's back in our court uh, for approval so that they can move forward with the project, and this is resolution three, two, one, six, I'll answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to approve resolution thirty-two sixteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Elsa Beck.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Henson.
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Okay. Number seven, uh, consent agenda, all items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion. Number seven, uh, consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Please call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number eight ordinances, uh, A, third reading ordinance twenty-three oh six. Will allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the finance officer language in the code of ordinances amending chapters eighteen, nineteen, five and seventeen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
To adopt.
Second. Please call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
B, second reading ordinance twenty-three oh seven to change the parking regulations of the code of ordinances amending chapter sixty-nine, section sixty-nine point oh eight, one, one, six. Uh, on the west and south side of South Jackson Street from southeast Lynn Street to Hancock Drive.
So moved?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
C, second reading ordinance twenty-three oh eight to rezone property on South Marshall Street. Changing the zoning from C one special commercial district to C three limited commercial district.
Promote.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Kahoho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Okay, uh, D, first reading ordinance twenty-three oh four. To allow the city of Boone, Iowa to add language for urban chickens in the code of ordinances, chapter fifty-five. And I, I assume that there's going to be a good deal of comment on this before any action is taken one way or another. The first thing I'd like to do is circle back to, uh, council members who heard the committee report. And any comment or discussion about the committee report for the.
So I can say for my ward, I have received all positives that people want chickens. Um, I say for every. One text or email that says no, I probably have two or three that says yes. Um, so I guess with this vote, if I do what my people in my ward say that they want, there would be a yes vote for me to allow chickens. So. I've heard an overwhelming amount of no's, so I'll put a motion out to not allow chickens in the city of Boone.
Have a significant number of citizens that like to comment first.
I'll second that.
I, I'm not going.
You still have the discussion.
Perfect.
After the vote. Or after the vote.
Well, now, okay, now, okay, so we are still allowing citizens to have, uh, commenting prior to the vote taking place. Uh, we have a number of people on Zoom right now, so we need to make sure that this is very orderly to make sure if they want to comment, they have the chance to do that. I will begin with, uh, anybody in the audit audience in person first. After that is exhausted, I will move to comments on Zoom. Uh, and I, since we probably do have a good number of people, I, I will limit comments to one minute per person. And I, I do not want any cross talk between audience members. City council members, elected officials or between audience members. I want this to be very orderly and professional, okay? Uh, so those are kind of going to be the ground rules here. So, uh, citizens, if you would like to please step up to the gate, state your name and your address and then you can start your statement. Uh, whenever you, after you say your, your name and address, I'll start the time.
All right, Victoria Sinclair, seven four fifth street, uh, little concerned that we're shredding off person number rights and the opportunity here from citizens in the community, but regardless, here we are. Personally, I have no intentions of getting chickens, but you know who I do care about in this community? The children. I coach soccer, I coach T-ball. I love the kids in this community. And you know what you're doing? If you choose not to pass this ordinance, you are generationally taking away the ability for these kids to raise a chicken in four H. And that's something that should be in all of your consciousness when you choose to vote this. It's a generational shift away from our agricultural ideology.
Thank you.
And don't.
Okay, go ahead. You still have thirty seconds.
And we shouldn't allow fear mongering over hypotheticals that don't exist at this time. There are forty to fifty houses that have chickens that are by and large not causing any problems at this point in time. The fear mongering over the hypothetical worst case scenarios of what we're giving up on the other side and taking from our children. I have no words for the little disappointment I have in this council we choose to vote this down.
Thank you. Yes.
Erin Drake, seven twenty fifteenth street. Um, I also don't plan to have any chickens, but I want to remind everybody that this is a constitutional country, a constitutional state, and the constitution applies in this city, this county. In the rural areas and in the urban areas, and some of those rights are unenumerated rights, which mean that we actually have the right to do absolutely anything we want. So long and unless you can prove a state's or city's interest in preventing us from do so. So having reasonable regulation for people to have chickens seems totally reasonable to me. And I want to remind people that while you guys are doing a vote and you use the majority, remember that my neighbor shouldn't get to tell me what color to paint my house just because they don't like it. They shouldn't be able to tell me that they don't want me to do something just because they don't like it. And our forefathers did not mean for the majority to always rule. What they meant was to preserve individual rights. Reasonable regulation with the chickens. There should be no reason people can't do it. I've basically seen dogs act worse and be louder and more concerned.
Thank you.
Banning chicken.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Jenny Mitchell. I'm fourteen sixteen Boone Street. I have a whole list of things to say, um, but then once hearing the, your meeting beforehand, I felt very disturbed. Because, uh, I, judging from who I've spoken to in the community, I'm very active in the community. Um, I hear differently. I hear no's. I do hear no's, but overwhelmingly I hear guesses. So perhaps this is something that should be voted on by the community instead of just decided on, uh, by the city council members. So I would say maybe we should look at that and put that on the November fifth ballot to see if the whole community of Boone wants to have chickens and vote on it. Do you want to bring up one thing? So I'm a scientist. I do a lot of research. I spent the past couple weeks, um, reading peer reviewed scientific papers on backyard chickens. And, uh, bird flu, and so most, uh, bird flu cases are in flocks of over fifty, not six. So there is a. Sorry, okay. I also want to talk about food waste. So in Belgium, they gave their community members chickens and it reduced the landfill waste by a hundred thousand tons. So just put that to the button.
Jordan Hammer or some people like to refer to me as the keyboard warrior. Um, I think it's absolutely ridiculous.
Address?
Uh, six oh three Clint Street here, Ward.
Thank you.
Mr. Bird, I think it's absolutely ridiculous. People are not going to be allowed to have chickens. Um. I find it blatantly ironic that you guys keep referring that you're representing the people that you represent while we're getting ready to have a vote on the moment, so they're going to vote it down already. So I just think it's ridiculous. Every thread, every meeting you guys had, I don't even know why you guys have these meetings to allow public input, because you guys don't listen anyway. You're just doing whatever you want anyway. So I'm just here to tell you that it ain't over. Um, Mr. Bird, I know for sure that you are not verifying people's addresses. I thought Jen approved to prove, but you are verifying people who are pro chickens. So. You're up for election next year. I guarantee you are not going to run the votes. And the fact that you ran on chickens and then bolt as easily as you did, good luck. Good luck. So I guess.
Next.
Hi, Samantha Rice, six oh three Clinton. Uh, out of the twenty plus people that I know, only one was opposed to chickens. I had kids that are interested in four H and opposing the chickens. What's the point of four H if you're not going to allow animals like that? They're not going to be able to learn anything, especially in a county like ours. So I, as everyone else said, you guys aren't listening to us. So what's the point of having these meetings?
You. Next.
Uh, Paul Faust, uh, fifteen ten sixteen street for Ford. And two real concerns, uh, I'm opposed to it. Uh, first is property values. Um, you know, if, if we have somebody moving to town, you've got a really nice home, that there's chicken coops all around. I think that's for me personally, that'd be a no. Um, I would not look at that. Um. And, uh, but you know, I think one of the things when I grew up out in the country. Um, and, and helped our neighbors with chickens, mice, and there's rats. I'm concerned about an infestation of those two, which brings in more fox than we have in that northeast corner of the town anyway. And potentially coyotes to feed on those two. So, uh, I understand other people's points. When I had an opportunity to do for it, okay, thank you.
That's in a couple seconds.
I'm just gonna say, um, when I went to school, there were people that lived in town that had an opportunity to do four H with people that did live in the country. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, I'm Jessica Fine, two, two, two Clinton Street. My husband and I moved to Boone fourteen years ago and shortly after we moved, we did build a chicken coop and we had chickens back when they were allowed. Um, I just wanted to share that they were, it was a wonderful experience. We did have some neighbors that, um, that I know didn't like them and would come over and have a conversation and say. Could you keep them in this part of the yard where we won't see them or hear them? And we were very accommodating and were able to always make it work out. Um. They were delightful to watch catch mice and voles in our yard and eat bugs. Um. There was no smell. I think the important thing is to remember that any animal that you keep, you need to be a responsible owner and that's what we tried to do. Thank you.
Next.
April Birch, three twenty-one Great Street. Um, a hundred and sixty-six years, supposedly, is the length of time since Boone was incorporated and people were allowed to have chickens in town. It's just been the last seven years, as far as I understand it, that this has been disallowed. Um. We've had chickens for a very long time. My family's been in Boone and chickens helped my family get by. In the late eighteen hundreds, all the way through the nineteen hundreds, and I think that everyone should have the opportunity. To do with their own private property as they seem fit, so long as they are not violating the code of ordinances in terms of nuisance. Or anything that is bothering their neighbors actively, and I think that people can work together in neighborhoods as well to. Adjust any situations that may be problematic, and I think that's what makes a good community. I think that. Working together with our neighbors to build a better community should be our goal. Not shutting our neighbors down and, and trying to manage what they're doing on their private property. Thank you.
Next.
Yeah, Mitch Carroll, twelve seven one stage. Uh, I'd like to remind most of council members attended meeting next door in April. And the majority of that room was pro allowing chickens back in, I think, two, three or four, but maybe, maybe half a dozen. Uh, citizens that chose to not allow that. I encourage you to adopt the ordinance that is written here. You guys go to vote on that here shortly. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, I'm Linda Bound. I live at two forty South Green, uh, or South Boone, excuse me. And I am a proud chicken grandmother. I have many chickens that my grandchildren take care of and they feed me greatly. I have my own egg carton. And so these grandfather linchings, it's a, and I get, I say, please, and I come back and eggs are actually one of my primary, um. Protein sources. I have watched my grandchildren thrive taking care of these chickens. From the time my one grandson was tiny and he thought that they were a pet, they take care of them. We have one that thought she was a parrot. And she would land on, she still will land on my granddaughter's shoulder. There is so much joy. And, um, goodness that comes from chickens. Plus, I'm not even going to get into my thoughts about private property. And that, and I gotta say, my neighbors are way, way, way noisier than any chickens I've ever known. Their dogs bark. Thanks.
Next.
Matt Parsons, eight one eight eight street. You know, when I moved here to Boone a while back, I, uh, from Ames, I never thought chickens would be an issue. It seems like a matter of personal freedom and my neighbors in Ames had chickens and didn't cause any trouble at all. In fact, it ate the bugs that their other animals they didn't take care of. Brought around. Once they got chickens, the fleas and things stopped getting on our animals. So I'm really not sure what the hang up is here. I mean, uh, property values in Ames don't seem to be an issue. There's chickens there, so. I really don't know why it's even an issue. It seems like freedom.
Next. Thank you. Any more, uh, comments from members of the audience in person? Uh, members on Zoom, council, uh, community members on Zoom, if there's anybody who would like to chime in with a comment. Please comment now, the Zoom meeting. We do not see anything in the chat, uh, for anybody requesting to have comment from the Zoom meeting. Now, uh, I have something that I'd like to add to conversation. Members of the Boone City Council, today you're considering adopting an ordinance that would allow the citizens of Boone to keep and raise chickens. The practice of keeping chickens in urban areas has historically been, uh, very important and indeed the largest cities in the nation. And our state allow the practice with little to no oversight. The presence of chickens is a net positive for local communities. Ensuring a maintainable, uh, food source that is not subject to the whims and practices of large corporations, allowing our citizens to gain some measure of self-sufficiency. More than that, however, property owners should have the rights in our city that the citizens in other cities enjoy. We must also be sensitive to any act policy or ordinance that curtails the rights of citizens to utilize their property the way they see fit. Unless there's some very tangible harm that could be created to other citizens or property owners. To the citizens who have voiced their concerns about allowing chickens, I appreciate your concern and thank you for speaking out. In many instances, I believe there's not enough public knowledge about the prevalence and importance of the practice that leads to some misconceptions. I would be happy to assuage your fears by pointing out that we already have folks in town who keep flocks and you would never even know it because they're incredibly discreet. Additionally, I spoke with the heads of animal control in Ames and Des Moines, which allow chickens with little oversight or restriction. And they assured me that the chickens have never been a problem, an issue for them and their systems work quite well. In my three campaigns for elected office, I had featured this issue quite prominently as something that I feel needs to be done. Both in a way to remove an unnecessary restriction on people's property rights, but also a signal to people who are considering moving here from other areas that we are a city which will welcome them. Indeed, in my campaign for this office, the two candidates that indicated that when they were in favor of allowing chickens gained an overwhelming seventy-five percent of the vote share. Other council members have campaigned on this issue and won as well. And I know that there are many people who made the decision for both of our office solely on this issue. When a public forum was held to garner input on the topic, an even larger majority came out in favor. Indeed, tonight, a large majority of those that chose to speak were in favor. To that end, I will now read a letter that a young man mailed me about his desire to keep and raise chickens. This was mailed to me February fifteenth of this year. Dear Elijah Stines, hello, you do not know me, but I know you. I cannot vote yet due to my age, but I did influence many citizens to vote for you in your campaign for mayor. I'm not asking for any thanks and I'm just letting you know. I did not do that for no reason. While you were running, you made promises, one of them being chickens. I want chickens very badly and I wanted you to win because of this. I trust that you are still working on legalizing chickens in the city of Boone. I ask that you hurry up on doing this. You were only a mayor for so long, and if you legalize chickens, another mayor could undo this anyway. What I'm saying is hurry up. I understand being mayor has duties and responsibilities and I am aware that it isn't the fastest process to legalize something, but I was promised chickens, so get it done, please. I don't know much about politics, but I do know that you don't have the power to legalize chickens, but you have a large say in it and the power to persuade others. I ask that you try your very hardest at this task. I still have no regrets in rooting for you. And I don't want to get in, so don't let me down. As a citizen of Boone, I ask these things of you. The return address is in the upper right corner of this page. Please get back to me on the progress of this topic and any updates you think would be good for me to hear. Thank you. Finally, our city staff are the ones that must investigate and threaten to impose large fees every time they receive a complaint that someone simply has chickens, regardless of whether or not they pose an actual nuisance. Now folks have repeatedly moved here with plans to engage in this very common practice, utilizing a right that other property owners in other cities enjoy, only to face threatening letters from the city. I do not want city staff to put it, be put in the position of presenting a hostile atmosphere to newcomers for a city and make them feel unwelcome. Our chief of police spent a large amount of time in researching crafting this ordinance based on best practices in other locations. This ordinance has the weight of that research and diligence behind it. So now it is time to ask. I am looking for you to vote no in rejecting this ordinance and then motion and vote yes to adopt the, the, the ordinance. Thank you. There has been a motion and a second to reject the ordinance. Please call the roll.
Mormon?
Let's see, what's the motion?
Motion was to reject the ordinance.
Yes.
Elsa Beck?
No.
Williamson?
Yes.
Inkstrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Kahoho Kelly?
No.
Here's comments. Uh, there's a great time down the Light Road Carnival, uh, a ton of people there. Always make it extra hot as well. Uh, I'd asked Zach for a cooler day, but he didn't deliver that, but he delivered a lot of fun. Uh, so make sure you go down there and even adults can sign up for the summer reading program. I encourage you to do that. Uh, second thing, uh, there were a bunch of appointees on boards and commissions. Today I want to thank all of them for stepping up to serve, uh, on those, uh. We were fortunate to have a lot of people interested in these, uh, which is not always the case, so I appreciate this. Um, and then thirdly, uh, if any of you would like to speak to me about chicken issue and you want to reconsider your position, I'm always open to hear that. Uh, that are, those are all my comments. Uh, number ten, council member comments.
Remind everybody, nice. It's this Friday, um, cornhole tournament, cog show, new, new games and stuff for the kids, so. Fruit trucks, beer can.